Okay, Kelly. Back in regular session at seven fifty-two. Okay, I'm going to withdraw my agenda item. And, uh... Leave it at that. Okay? So we'll move on to old business. Uh... Is that Wendell Dunn in the, in your office yet?
Could I do a quick roll call from your executive?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Meyer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Reisig?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay? And do you have a timeline of when it's gonna be done so we can take this off the old business?
No, Jay's been working with the generator stuff.
He's a little busy getting air conditioning back at the building.
We should give him a little, little time.
Okay.
Judge Dean, um, his holdup is being three bands in July.
Okay.
So, hopefully amongst that couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you. I believe we've already talked about the time clock plus payroll processes.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody want anything with that? Okay. Uh, we did move up the public comments to prior to our executive session again so everybody didn't have to wait. So at this time, the board of commissioners will receive public comments on items discussed at this meeting or suggestions for items of discussion at a future board meeting. Won't take any action. And we ask that if anybody does have anything to say to the board, that you come to the podium and, uh, give us your name and address, please. Is there anybody that wishes to speak?
Regional Preston, three seven one nine, Five Oaks Drive, Scottsbluff. All right, good evening, gentlemen. Uh, on the subject of the moratorium, uh, the January sixteenth meeting, Commissioner Knapper, uh, stated his goal with the moratorium was to quote, uh, have some basic building blocks in place, uh, reading from the Star Herald, which is where I took these. Commissioner Harris quoted as saying it was, uh, gives us some, a little bit of time to get prepared for whatever comes next. Of course, this was accepting the Citula CUP that you were very clear was not part of that moratorium. But my first key question of three that I'm gonna give you tonight to consider is, uh, what does the board have to present for your six-month moratorium? I took some real quick notes in here as you were discussing it there. It was so long ago, we couldn't recall if any action was taken on the contract with Mr. Marvin. We couldn't recall how much was spent. And we couldn't recall if we got a copy of any report that was produced. So six months, sometimes it's a long time, sometimes it's not a long time, uh, but clearly in this case, uh, there was enough time elapsed that we struggled as a board, uh, to put together a cogent singular memory of what's happened. So that's the first question. What do you have to present for your efforts thus far? One of the counterpoints, and I think Charlie may have mentioned it, uh, there was so much time spent on the Citula program, uh, that there was no time left over to work on the larger picture of solar regulation here in Scottsbluff County. If that's the case, uh, I think I do have some concerns as a member of the public for the board's ability to multitask and get the job done and use your staff and your contractors effectively to take a multi-pronged approach to do things in a timely fashion. Uh, the public has a basic expectation that the elected bodies that we, uh, put into office will get their things done, uh, that are, uh, in an effort to support the public and in the public good. Moving on, uh, looking ahead to the next six months, uh, I'd like to hear a better statement of what is the purpose. Uh, I know you've mentioned Mr. Maybin's working, uh, so maybe your purpose is to allow Mr. Maybin the bandwidth to finish this project and deliver it. Uh, and how will he achieve that? I think you stated that, uh, he will achieve that through his own subcommittee of this, the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, if there's any delta there, uh, I would ask that that be cleared up so that when we get to the end of the next six months, we can measure from tonight to that night, uh, to see if we've met the mark or not and what delta might exist that we would need to address. Uh, so that's the second key area, second key question. The third key question, this one is more of a, "I need your help to understand" type of a question. Uh, wouldn't need an answer if you needed to use one of your resources. Unfortunately, Attorney Ubanks is not here. I think that'd be your natural selection, although Mr. Cannon, uh, may be able to help, uh, in the back. This is certainly in his wheelhouse, I'm sure. At least he knows a guy, uh, seems to be my sense, he's very well-plugged in. So, the question is, what is the legal authority to impose a moratorium that comes from the state statute to allow the board to do this? And then what is the difference between your process to, uh, change the ordinances that you're proposing to change and as compared to the process to pause the ordinance that you're proposing to pause? Is there a delta there should you be holding public comments such as you probably would for changing an ordinance? So, if there's answers to that, happy to hear them. If you need references, if you need folks to help weigh in on that, provide answers, perfectly fine. Uh, although I will mention as an aside, uh, we're very heartened to hear, per Mr. Cannon's report, that's right, Cannon?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Cannon's report a minute ago. Uh, heartened to hear that Scottsbluff County's premier state lobbyist and NACO is now supporting economic development and green energy by running their facility to Nextera, and I presume there's only one Nextera. If it's the one I'm familiar with, it's a huge solar, wind, battery storage, uh, utility developer. I think last week they just announced they're developing four and a half gigawatts of solar with storage. So the fact that, uh, NACO's leaning forward, sharing space with, uh, Nextera, I think this is fantastic. If this reflects the board's wants and desires for their lobbyist, and he said he very clearly works for you, uh, we certainly, uh, and heartily second his efforts. Thanks.
Thank you, Regional. Anybody else wish to speak?
My name's Kim Bowman, and I live at seventeen fifty-five Nineteenth Street in Gearing. And I'm here, once again, I think you commissioners are taking this thing real personal about this solar farm. In fact, I think another six months, you won't have anything done. You haven't got anything done in six months. So what makes another, what makes you believe the public, tell, tell the public you're gonna do anything different to learn about this system? Russ, the night, the, the permit was denied. The reason you said it was, you did not voted to deny it was that the application, the name was wrong. That was the only reason.
Was filled out in the wrong name, but it already been approved through a planning commission.
But...
Under that name.
Since then, you've added this, you're scared it's gonna be another thirtieth-century asbestos thing like the sugar. Yes, you have, it's on record.
There's no asbestos in this project.
But you're saying one of your concerns now is it could turn into what the Great Western had with the asbestos, you don't know. You guys keep adding and adding items to what you want Citula to do.
I'm asking for a decomission-
Have you put it in writing and asked them? Hard copy what we want from you folks? I don't think you have. I think you change, it's like shooting a duck, you just keep moving, you're never gonna catch it. You people are ruining our, you know, economically, you're just killing, killing the pooch. I don't think, how you gonna grow? Why would anybody come here and have five people shoot them down? Where else are you gonna have an eight-hundred-plus-million-dollar project and five guys who just don't want it, kill it? I think you're doing the public a ter- tremendous disservice.
Okay. I still want a decommissioning plan before I vote for it. I want something in for decommissioning.
But you added that after the night you said I voted no only because the name was wrong. Now you keep adding, Russ. You, you can't keep adding things. What if you bid a job for ten dollars and then your client keeps adding stuff? You're gonna tell-
I'm gonna charge more money.
No.
Well, you don't, if they add stuff, I'm gonna charge more money.
You kick them out. You can't keep adding things. You just can't keep adding things and not get paid for it.
Well...
These people aren't asking you for anything. Have they asked you for any bon, uh, uh, TIF money or help, help me get the, started? No. They just want a permit and you guys deny it. And now you want another six months to deny it.
It's gonna take that long to get something in writing, you know?
From who?
Well, Mr. Harris suggested we hire an attorney.
You're gonna get some, come on, Charlie. You've got a band, a band-etta against this project. Period. You stated, two, two meetings ago, you'll never vote for this project. So we're, we're not, even shouldn't be talking to you. You're not doing the, the Scottsbluff County citizens any favors. And it's on record, you said, "I will never vote for it." Now you're asking for six months, kick the can down the road? I think you gentlemen have done a terrible disservice financially to the public of Scottsbluff.
Well, that's your opinion, you're entitled to that. I'm here to represent thirty-six thousand people, not four.
Okay. Well, I'm at it before I sit down, okay? I think Mr. Knapper still should resign immediately. I think Mr. Blue should go also, because he seems to rubber stamp whatever you two want without much thought.
You, you, last week, you told me it was my job to rubber stamp what the planning commission does, and now you're, you're telling him that he should resign because he's a rubber stamper?
To you two, whatever you say, he votes. So I'm calling for your resignation as well.
I voted the way my constituents, constituents, or constituents told me to vote. Everybody that talked to me about this project before we cast the vote said no. Not one person said, "Vote for it." The only person that chewed me out afterwards was one constituent, called me next day and just chewed me out. Every house come up, shook my hand, said, "Thank you." So I'm gonna vote the way my public wants me to vote, unless it's morally wrong.
Just asking for your two resignation immediately.
Sir, I won't resign.
Okay, and I know Charlie won't.
I've got a job to do, and I'm gonna do it. If you don't like it, too bad.
Thanks.
Is there anybody else? Okay, thank you for your comments. We'll move on to, uh, board and staff reports. I'll start out, I've been having some conversations with Kina and Kelly both about the scheduling for the tax protests. I got a texter, and I can't fight it, about extending it into the next week possibly, 'cause we're up to about two hundred, Rob, Robert, is that correct? We're up to about two hundred protests?
Yeah, as of Friday, I didn't have a count, see, that's Friday, go one hundred and seventy-eight.
Okay. One of the suggestions that she made was to, uh, stop or heck, go home for dinner and stay home until the next day, basically. Uh, it makes for a long day when we're here till nine o'clock at night or whatever. I said, "That's, you know, I would prefer that, but we'll have to, you know, get that approved by everybody here. I'm not gonna make, make that call." Uh, you know, so what, what do you guys think of that? Do you wanna go on in the evenings or how do you wanna handle it?
You know, I, I, I think I'd like to get a little further if we could to see how many we're gonna actually have. We had seven hundred last year, we did them in seven days. If we're only gonna have four or five hundred, yeah, I agree.
We may get, we may be able to get through.
If we have twelve hundred, we're gonna be here a while, we're gonna be here a while. Well, it appears to be-
And I think it's gonna be a lot.
And, and we may go into a couple of days the following week.
We've already opened up Tuesday and Wednesday.
Tuesday and Wednesday?
Of the following week.
All right, thank you. Charlie, you have something to say?
How late are you scheduling right now?
Six, I believe, six P.M.
As, as the last, the last protest?
Five forty-five for the last.
For the last protest, okay.
Well, the last scheduled, but you know you guys will go till seven, probably.
Yeah, it never lasts fifteen minutes, I haven't been in one yet. So what's, what's your thoughts, folks?
I mean, if we could get it done in three days, going nine A.M. to nine P.M., that would be great. But if it's gonna be five, seven, or eight days, then I'd rather go nine to five.
I agree. As, uh, if we, if we can get it done, I mean, if there's, if we're gonna have four or five hundred, we can get that done in three.
And she was asking about a longer, a longer lunch here, time, you know, to get away and refurbish ourselves a little bit.
I mean, we didn't extend what we had last year.
Yeah.
Well, in several of those cases, we were behind, and so because we were behind, some people, we just staggered some.
You staggered lunches and just went on the other side of the wall, yeah.
Yeah, it worked, it, it worked out all right. So, is everybody okay with that scheduling for right now?
I would appreciate it if I could please.
And, and like Kina said, I, and I, I can't remember what day I talked to her. Uh, it's flexible enough to move things around, and if we need to do something different, we'll do something different. But, uh, I'm like you, Charlie, I, I... If we could get it all done in two or three days, I, I don't mind staying late, but I don't know if that's gonna happen.
Yeah, and Robert's staff is working on reviews, so that might open up some of that first week if, if no hearing is needed, and then we'll fill those in again.
Keep in mind, it's not just the five of us. We've got, uh, all of your staff, we have all of the assessor staff that are gonna be here that late also. It, it makes for long days, it really does. Okay. So we'll have, as we get a little closer, we'll have a little better number on what we gotta do. Okay, thank you. Uh, I'll, I'll continue, I'll move on. I've got, this week are all my meetings, uh, that were all moved from last week because of the NACO, uh, meeting that was held. So I don't have a whole lot to report, but, uh, Russ, what, we'll start with you down there.
We met at the airport, board, they're, uh, got some unhappy renters out there because they raised some insurance, or rates, rental rates on their building, or hangers. And so, uh, which they have to do. But they're, they're not gonna rip the Band-Aid off and just raise everybody, they're raising a little at a time.
These are the ones who are the leases we're coming due?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, and there's some unhappy fellows out there, but, you know, they weren't doing a triple-net lease prior, and, and it's gonna cost some money. This insurance costs money, and we can't just keep, you know, dumping it into it. The other thing I checked, Steve had a, uh, he had the chip sealing crew in town today, and they did three miles this morning. Did you get done by noon or, no, you had a, you had a late truck. You'd have been done at noon if that tanker'd been on time, which they'd, they'd have had three miles chips.
Sunflower?
Uh, no, sunflower.
Sunflower road?
Yeah, they did all of sunflower today in, uh, three hours. And they would, or three miles, and they would've done it in four, or five hours, I guess you guys would've been on. But they had a truck was an hour and forty-five minutes late with, with, uh, oil. And so, they had, they did an excellent job, the, the guys are really getting onto that, doing a really good job. Looking really good.
Okay.
Well, I attended the Region Twenty-two, uh, Board, and we discussed, uh, the situations, Ashley, and, and our inter-local agreements. And then Saturday morning, I went out and to the airport, and we did the, uh, traffic, incident management training with all the different agencies. We had, uh, Dix Fire, uh, Scottsbluff Gearing Fire, uh, State Patrol, uh, CERT team. We had, uh, three different tow truck companies out there, uh, which is really good training for them because they didn't realize what all transpired before they got to an accident scene. And so, uh, this is the first time that the state brought that training out to western Nebraska, so we'll be doing it again in the future. And like I said before, I, I recommend that the county commissioner get a chance to go observe some of that training. Please do so, see how your agencies work.
How soon are you gonna start advertising for Tim's position?
We are here.
Already?
We are.
You, you've got it out there already, okay.
Yeah. We've had some interest.
Yep, one from California.
One from California, and we're hearing there's some local interests, they just gotta get their apps, and they have till June thirty.
Okay. Mark?
Um, the, uh, I have, um, uh, one meeting, uh, I believe, only this week. And, um, uh, the meeting that from, from last week that I thought I had actually is pushed off a month out. So, um, I didn't have to attend those. So I don't have a whole lot to report. Oh, well, I shouldn't say that, let me give my other two things. So normally I ask about, um, our upcoming schedule, um, Ms. Kelly. So, and let me mention my first one, my favorite.
The detention center?
No.
Oh.
The fact that we're gonna be closed on Wednesday, right?
Oh, good, yes.
Juneteenth, June nineteenth. Just wanna be sure everybody knows, the public knows, that we're gonna be closed on the nineteenth, so, okay? And besides that, what else we got?
You'll have to do your detention center tour in July. Our protest hearings start on July eighth. At this time, we were not going to use the fifteenth since it's a regular day for protest hearings. A regular commissioner meeting.
And we have a regular commissioner meeting on July first.
On July first. And then, did you guys, um, pick July twenty-ninth as a work session, by chance?
I think we need a work session.
You've got a fifth Monday.
It's a fifth Monday.
After tax protests, you still wanna come back?
Well, I, 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 I think Mr. Preston's right on the button. You know, the wheels of government turn slowly, and, and we, we need to kick it into gear.
Okay, what I would suggest then is, uh, if, we can schedule on the, on the twenty-ninth, if you would get your, uh, agenda items in or what you wanna talk about to Kelly so that we have some type of a, of a guideline to go by. Make sure all the department heads know, and elected officials, if they have anything that they could bring up at that meeting.
Break dealer can start time?
Uh, four-thirty, does that work for everybody?
Chairman?
Yes.
Can we serve budgets?
Excuse me?
Budget pres, can we serve budget presentations?
No, I would prefer not. Here's, here's what happens with these workshops or these, these, uh, work sessions. Is it turns into a regular meeting where department heads run the meeting. I think we need to sit around that table in a circle, the five of us. The media can be here, but we need, we need to just rap about what, what we need to work on. Wha- what, what projects need to move forward. We can't sit here and, we're the ones that are supposed to be running this county. And we can't sit here and just take up all this extra time, you know, having different department heads bring us their ideas all the time. That's what the regular meetings are for. Work sessions are for the board.
Well, that's not the way it used to be, and so they're used to, isn't that right?
That's correct.
My understanding was previously, it was the intent for them to bring things. And that's probably why they, you see them doing that. Um, things that, but, uh, I would agree to the extent that we need to have, particularly for that one item alone, the, with Bill Maybin and, um, exactly where we're headed on the, um, planning commission things. And what can we do to help?
And we could do that in another meeting, too. We could have another, another work session for just that. I have no problem with that either.
But I agree that that needs to be done.
No, I, I mean, I, can we run a, a work session without Robert's rules of order? And we can just, we just, we're just there.
Well, there's, you're not gonna be voting on anything.
No, we're not.
It's just a, it's a, just a discussion, and that's what it amounts to, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're really, yeah.
Well, I think you need to be sitting over here because it is a public meeting, and this is where we have the microphones, so...
Probably right.
But you could just...
Kinda wanting that done that way.
Leave it to your own discussion, I would imagine.
That's, that's what I would like to see. You know, we asked about this, we asked to start budget discussions several months ago, and we never got there. For the fifth, the sixth year in a row now. We've asked to start this sooner, and we have never gotten there.
How soon do, how soon do you want to start?
Well, we could go back to the agenda item that I had several months ago that said start the budget discussions. And, and I was questioned on why we were gonna do it then. And we left that meeting with, with the idea that we were gonna come back to the next meeting, or actually, we were gonna come back in two meetings with last year's budget plus three and a half percent increases for the employees. And we were gonna see where that put us in terms of, um, increased spending over last year. And I was questioned on why we wanted to do that, why we needed to do that now. Somebody asked, "What's the point of doing this without having values set?" Or even having preliminary values, and it was just questioned up and down. But the, the majority of the board decided that was the direction we needed to go. And then we never got that information. I understand Mr. Preston's frustration because there are things that this board asks for that don't get delivered. And we don't hold people, people's feet to the fire when those deliverables don't come to us. So... Here we, here we are, you know, up against the wall again with budget time. And, you know, we could've had a lot of this information already.
Lisa, what was your plan when to start budget discussions?
I just asked July, and we do August. You're getting some salary stuff tonight.
Okay.
So, that and I've, I've asked for budgets, and I've had, I've received very few.
Are you getting some?
A few. Most of the appointed officials have turned theirs in. And, yeah, I'm starting to get some elected.
So do you have a specific time when you would like to start the budget stuff?
You, you get through your meeting, we'll do it like we do. We just set a week and go, first week of August or something, go through them all, if you wanna meet with everyone. Nor do you wanna just go with key departments, or you wanna review on your own?
This is why, this is why the, this direction has to come from the board.
And, you know, you did go through a month of May and June of meetings going till eight, nine o'clock as it was.
Right.
When were you fitting that in? So I'm sorry, it's not all my fault.
No, no, it's not. It's, it's follow-through on our part. That's what it is. That's where my frustration is.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot of things right now.
Okay, so we've got a work session planned for the twenty-ninth. And are we going to do that just with the board, or are we going to let department heads, elected officials present whatever they feel they need to talk to us about? Do we make that decision right now?
I would suggest that the, uh, that the board take whatever time as they feel necessary with the thought of, uh, up to even a couple hours. And then if, um, um, when we're done with that, that if there's, um, staff that wants to talk about some things, we can talk about them. But...
It always, it just, it just makes for a better time, rather than taking up time at a, at a meeting like this to be bringing up a lot of things.
Some stuff.
Some stuff, and, and, uh, if they have concerns or questions or whatever, that would be a good time to get a lot of that cleared up. And that's what we use those sessions for, uh, was for something over and above whatever was, was discussed at our regular meeting. Okay, I, I, I'm okay with, with that. We'll, we'll start with our, we'll start with the board and, uh, and let everybody else know whoever has something that they wanna bring. Bring it, and we'll do what we can in the time. It may run late, but it is what it is. Doesn't matter to me at all. It's, I, I would, I don't disagree with what you're saying, Charlie. I, I, I think we do need a board session, a board session. I agree. For just, for just us. How are we doing? What, what do we need to do differently? What, what's happening? And, and I think that's, I think that's very necessary. And I'd like to do that sooner than later. But again, this is a tough month, we're gonna be here for a whole, for a whole week with, with, uh, with protests. A whole, well, maybe longer, maybe a week and a half, who, who knows? What, what does the rest of you feel?
Good. What we gotta do, we, we've gotta get this done. We haven't had a chance to meet as a board, and we need to get that.
Let's, we'll start out on the twenty-ninth and then see, see where we go from there.
Okay, so you said leave it to the five of you for two hours, and somebody can come see you at six-thirty? Is that what you're telling me to pass on?
I don't know whether it'll go two hours.
It won't go two hours, I doubt it, it will, but give it an hour and a half. An hour and a half.
With, with the expectation that it could go two hours.
We could even start earlier if we needed to. We could start, let's start, how about start at the three?
Three o'clock, and then that'd give you an hour and a half, and then they...
Yeah.
Come here after.
Let's do that.
Three o'clock?
Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
I like, that's what that is.
Now I have to change my calendar on my... That's not easy.
Okay, when am I put, while we're confirming dates, your appointments to boards and agencies? When do you want that on the schedule?
I'd ask everybody to take a look at it and then come, come back with what they wanna do.
Yeah.
It, it's not an emergency situation.
Well, no.
If we could get a, just a consensus of, of what boards that you're feeling okay about being, uh, the, uh... I lost the word. It's getting late. The what?
Well, where some of them, we feel we don't have to have a...
Yeah, and I think we just, I think we just go through those, 'cause there are some, yeah, exactly. There's some alternate, that's the word I was looking for. It'll come out sooner or later. Uh...
Uh, so how about if, if our, maybe at that, at that meeting on the twenty-ninth, if we could just take ten minutes and go through that, too?
And then I could put it on the first meeting in August or something?
Sure.
Okay.
I, I don't think that, does, is that be voted on? I don't think it does, does it?
I don't know.
I don't know that we vote on the committee assignments.
Yeah, you do.
Do we?
Yes, you do.
I don't remember if we did or not, okay.
All in one vote.
Okay, all right. That's fine. Well, if, we'll just, we'll just.
So this'll be part of your work session and then put it in August?
Yeah, we just briefly, briefly go, or everybody again, take a look at your, at the list and come up with who you want or not want, and, and then go from there. Okay? All right, Mark, you have anything else?
No.
Charlie?
Uh, Tourism meets Wednesday, uh, at one-fifteen. Ken is gonna be there. We're gonna, one of the items on the agenda is to discuss, um, what the expectations of the Tourism Committee are and what is the role of the Tourism Committee. Um, I sent you guys that email a couple of weeks ago with the statutes and the bylaws. Um, and so if, if you guys could just, you know, give those things a, a, a once-over, you know, just, just like speed read them like four or five times. And they're, you know, they're really short. Their statutes are super short. And if you could just, just, just get your mind around what, how you interpret those. Um, and maybe that's something we can discuss at the work session, you know, just to. Just to say, "Hey, this is the way I see it," you know, and, and, um, and then, um, kinda go from there. So, uh, Pat is this week. I don't know, Pat was last week. TC, TCD is this week. Got a really nice email from TCD today. Um, a guy, their grant writer I told you guys about, about a couple of weeks ago, um, identified some grant opportunities for the county and the Safe Streets Initiative. And, um, I thought that was great that he went out and found those himself. Um, so, so it looks like we gotta go get her there, uh, in that position. So, um, I think we need to meet with him, maybe, you know, me and Russ, and Lisa, me and Russ and Steve.
I talked to, uh, Kelly Stray, and he, and I told him that we needed to find somebody to write grants. And he said, he said they got a new guy, and I think, I mean, that's why he contacted you, obviously. I think, I think I told him to contact.
Well, he emailed the board, didn't he?
But you, can you?
So if we, so if we, we just need to set the expectation of, you know, you know, if, if he needs some deliverables from the county in order to, to apply for the grant in a timely manner, or, you know, completely thoroughly, then we need to know who's gonna give him that information. Is it gonna be the clerk? Is it gonna be the Department of Roads? Is it, you know, who's that gonna be? So, just so we, um, can move this thing forward.
Okay.
Um. I think that's it for now.
Okay, uh, Lisa, we'll start with you. Do you have anything? Where are we at here? Steve, do you have anything else to come up with?
I think Russ probably covered it. It's chip ceiling this week, so.
Okay. Okay, wonderful.
What's, oh, you had to train you now. That went really well, I guess, gotta say.
Nothing? Robert?
Uh, just one thing. Uh, Russ will be coming in later this week. Uh, I'm gonna have each of the members come in to test their laptops, make sure they can have access to the system that they're using, and their products, and, and, yes. So, uh, Russ will be, he will be volunteering anyway, and, uh, we're gonna hold up, and I'll be reaching.
Very good. Kelly, do you have anything?
Just, um, I attended Budget Workshop and then Clerk Register of Deeds and Election Commissioner Workshop last week. Good stuff.
Good, very good. Yeah, over here.
No, another meeting.
Troy, anything? Okay. I think we've discussed legislation. Uh, I would entertain the motion to move in the executive session, uh, for the purpose of union contract negotiations for Sheriff's Union, Com Center, and discussion of personnel issue. Who do we all want in there? It'll be our board, Lisa, sheriff, or sheriff representative?
Tyler.
And Tyler. So we're gonna do, we're gonna do it all the same? Okay, all right. So we'll, uh, need a motion to move in executive session at eight-twenty-seven, please.
I move that we move into executive session.
Hey, you guys, could you come up and vote?
Yeah.
Hey, guys.
Hurry.
We don't, we need to, we need to finish up here.
Do we have a second?
The what?
Okay, I have motion, a second, any discussion? To call the roll.
Well, I'm.
Oh, are, are you ready to, can we do it?
Yeah, they were walking up.
Record your votes, please. I wasn't leaving you. Okay, executive session, please.
Can't get it to work from the stand. What are you talking about? Nope.